Everybody, this is the September 28th, 2020 Board of Education Regular Meeting. It is now 6:15. Heather, please conduct our board roll call.
Mr. Adams? Mrs. Capo?
Here.
Mrs. Case?
Here.
Mr. Kushner?
Here.
Mrs. Wall?
Here.
Move on to the approval of the agenda. You all have an agenda before you. At this time, I'll take any comments or changes or amendments to the current agenda. Seeing none, we'll move forward with any public comments. Moving on to our first order of business, Agenda Item 2, Discussion Items. 2.1, our Administrator Reports. Let's start with our elementary school principals, Principal Bryant and Principal Miller. Welcome.
Hi.
Hi, everyone.
Morning. Oh my gosh, I almost said good morning, you guys. That's the... All right, so thank you guys for being here tonight. And you know, I just wanted to start again with a thank you. It, I wanted to start with a little bit of a reflection of looking back over the past month. And I feel like a lot has happened since our last time we were together. So I would just, you know, a little bit I wanted to tell you, I, on Friday, I sent out a survey to all the K-2 families about their feedback as Cloud School for them is wrapping up and they're moving into in-person, kind of capture some of their feedback and reflections right now, along with the teachers' feedback of how they're feeling Cloud School went and their reflections at this point. And so I wanted to share a little bit with you. You know, we got a lot of the challenges, both from parents and from, um, from teachers about some of the difficulties that, you know, particularly for our kindergarten families that navigating the new technology, you know, they've never had any of this before and maintaining five and six-year-olds' focus and supporting their need for, you know, they're not ready yet for the level of independence and the amount of screen time and the challenges of not actually physically seeing their friends and teachers and some of those pieces. But we got a lot of really positive feedback too. And about things that I'm excited about taking as positive feedback, not just for Cloud School, but how we can continue some of these things in-person instruction. Like some of the positive feedback we got was about parents really liking now that they've had weekly one-on-one connections with their teachers. You know, getting to have kind of ongoing conferences and find out how their students doing. And that they felt really good that they were more involved. You know, they knew what their student was learning and how they were doing with it. And I think that's good feedback we can take moving forward in in-person as well. We had really, you know, 72% of them said that live learning sessions were impactful on their student learning. And 56% of parents reported that, um, that they felt like their students learned at the same, if not more, than they would have in-person. And so I was really interested to see where that would land. Which kind of ties into the next, you know, when I asked teachers about these things and we had a discussion at our leadership team last week, they really felt that, one of the quotes from someone was that we've had warp-speed collaboration, you know, both within their teams and with support teachers really aligning. And that it's created that this, uh, like hyper-focus. And because of that, we're getting some things done faster and more efficiently than we ever would have. And, um, like one of those examples is that our teachers worked really hard over the summer in learning our new SIPs intervention programs to do in their classroom, targeted small group reading instruction. And, you know, in-person, that would have started maybe week four, five. And instead in Cloud School, it started on day three. And we're really, you know, we've got progress monitored and we're seeing the impact of that and that growth already, which is really exciting. And I'm excited to see that continue even further face-to-face. And we heard that from the parents too, that, you know, overwhelmingly, they said that the number one most impactful thing of Cloud School was the small group time, which was good to know. And then, like I said, you know, our leadership team has been digging into, kind of, we were able to do all of our beginning-of-the-year assessments, not just for the Cloud School students, but also for our remote learning academy students. And then using that, we've been really kind of, last week, we did a protocol looking at our UIP goals from last year. And then, you know, what, based on our beginning-of-year data, how's that going to inform our next steps this year and our priorities of how we can continue our important work here in the primary grades. And, um, and one of the things that came up was really the emphasis on personalism, blended learning. And now we're really digging into how does that look when we continue in-person and continuing to do some more, which I'm super excited about, that Cloud School has opened the door for that at a way quicker pace. And so aligned with that, you know, back in September, we had our first PD Day as an elementary staff. And we were able to use that time really digging into, um, learning more about English language development. And then WEDA can do standards. And our teachers working on creating their ELD plans for the students in their classroom. Because with our small cohort size, K-5, now we can really dig in and teachers can own those and be a part of the development and integrate them all day long with our students. And then, um, looking to our upcoming kind of PD Day on, on October 5th, of looking at, um, switching our lens to foundational literacy and analyzing our beginning data even further, our progress monitoring, and making those plans and our re-plans for our students who are struggling. And, um, we're trying to accelerate their growth in their foundational literacy. So yeah, that's kind of a little bit about where we've been going and kind of where we're going to. We sent you our, you guys have read our, know our re-entry plans and all of that. And so John, do you want to talk more, John, about any three, five things? Or do you guys want to ask any questions about K-2 first?
I just want to say, thanks much for all your hard work. I think it's amazing to get such good feedback for digital classes from pre-K through 2, you know? That's amazing. And also I appreciate your effort to individualize and talk with all the families. That makes a big deal. So I just appreciate all your hard work. So thanks a lot.
You're welcome.
And Erin, I wanted to say for, for you and John, um, I've got a lot of friends who have small children in our district right now. And just from my own circle of friends, um, great feedback. There was a lot of growing pains at first, especially with the really little ones. You know, there is, it's a hard age. But just the growth that I've seen and the confidence with the parents that I know, I'm incredibly impressed. So thank you for, you and John, for the support that you're giving the parents. And our teachers are being amazing. And so thank you. I, I think that even though we, we didn't start off the way we wanted to, I think that we've made the very best of the situation. And just from my own personal bubble, great feedback. So thank you.
Thank you for passing that on.
Well, I can kind of take it from there, but jump in if you guys have any, have any other questions as we go along. And I'll talk a little more intermediate-specific and echo everything Erin has said. You know, we're, it's, it's just a pleasure to work with Erin. This is a new experience. It's great to have a co-principal, a primary intermediate. So that's been just awesome for me to be able to do this year. So, um, especially at a time where decisions are tough and decisions are not easy to, to come by. It's great to have, have that, that change this year. Uh, I did want to mention briefly, unrelated to my report, because I don't know if this would, is going to come up later, but Denise Ward is a preschool paraprofessional that has been with our district for a very long time. And, and in today's world where we're all remote, I'm sure you all noticed that she's actually retiring in a, in a couple of weeks. And so I did, I just wanted to mention that publicly, that we're going to miss Denise. Denise has been with our district for probably, um, I'm not exactly sure, 20, 25 years, a long time, working with our preschool students. And, um, so we're gonna, we're gonna miss Denise, but we're, we're happy that, um, she's able to retire at this time. And, and so I just wanted to put that out there, unrelated to my report, because I noticed that was on our personnel list. So, so good luck to Denise there. So yeah, just to follow up on some stuff that Erin had mentioned, uh, the Cloud School reflection, we're kind of at this point now where we're starting, we're looking back in a more intentional way on Cloud School and how things have gone and gathering feedback from parents and from teachers. And I just continue to be amazed at the creative ways that, that our teachers are reaching our students. And, uh, we continue every day to come up with more new and creative ways to innovate, to reach our kids. And Cloud School is, is not over yet. Uh, we have our phased approach happening where Cloud School will be phased out. So we're continuing to, to look forward to the next couple of weeks in Cloud School and, and the upper grades. And it will be phased out, of course, in the lower grades, more specifically this week. But just overall, very happy with where we are and proud of our, our staff and our teachers with that experience. So, um, like Erin said, you, you guys have seen our return to in-person plan. Uh, I can't tell you how excited I am and how excited our teachers are to see kids in-person. It's, uh, uh, it's, it's been a long time coming. And, um, I, I can, I can tell you that I am very confident in our plan. I'm confident that it's going to be a safe return to school and that we are following all of our guidelines and recommendations by the county, by the state. And, and I'm, I'm very excited to welcome our kids back and to work towards, um, uh, getting back to a feeling of, uh, you know, of normalcy as best we can and helping our students and our families feel confident in our, in our plan as they phase back in. Because that's going to be important, I think, over the coming weeks is to help everyone feel, um, comfortable in our, in our new normal. So very excited for that and excited for our little guys to start on Wednesday. So that's going to really be our focus this week is to bring our kindergarteners and first graders back, starting on Wednesday. So excited about that for sure. And you know, as we come back to in-person and start to, uh, start to welcome our kids back, we'll be able to start to get some things going that we have, that we haven't really gotten going yet this far into school year. Like for example, some of our school clubs. We have a lot of after-school clubs and opportunities for our kids. One of them, for example, is Garden Club. We're going to get our Garden Club up and running again. Very quickly, we have lots of great stuff to harvest down there at the community garden. So Mrs. Wharton will be getting that up and running, um, using all of our safety precautions and protocols, of course, but to provide some, uh, extended opportunities for our kids after school as well, with extracurricular opportunities. And there'll be quite a few more we'll be able to sprinkle in as we, as we get back to the in-person learning. So I'm excited about that. You know, we'll also be able to really refocus at the intermediate level some of our attention on, on a lot of our, uh, our projects that we have going, our global outcome projects and other projects like trout in the classroom, aquatic robotics, um, and things like that. We, uh, one thing in, in that, that falls in that category is our International Space Station Eris project that you guys, I'm sure, remember, uh, but we've kind of postponed that a little bit. We were actually scheduled to have, next week was actually the originally scheduled week for us to make our amateur radio contact with the International Space Station back in the summer. Yeah, uh, yeah, we decided, of course, that we had to postpone it. But I am excited to tell you that we, the new date is actually February 20, the week of February 28th, I think it is, if I'm not mistaken. Or 22nd, the week of February 22nd. And so, um, I'm really excited that we're going to be looking at that week for our contact with International Space Station. And so as we get back to in-person, all of these things that have maybe been put on hold, we can start to refocus on. So I'm excited for that. Erin mentioned our, our focus on, uh, bringing our English language development plans down to the classroom level. That's, that's going to be something new this year that we have not done, uh, to have our classroom teachers be, write our English language plans for our English language learners. And really in a more intentional way, be the keepers of those plans. And that falls under one of our, um, areas of focus as a district that I'm really excited about. We also have, uh, we're also able to continue to plan with our new counselor, Kelsey, some ways in which she can support the social-emotional learning and character education in the classrooms when we come back to in-person. She's been doing a great job of it remotely, uh, but we have some really exciting ways, some fun ways in which she can get, interact with the kids in the more, uh, and when it comes back to in-person. Let's see. So really, our, our next steps, the way that I think about our next steps over the coming weeks and months, because things just change so quickly. Our, our focus right, uh, our primary focus right now is to welcome our kids back to in-person learning and make them feel comfortable as quickly as possible and make it feel as real of a school experience, I guess you could say, as, as possible. So that's really going to be our pri, our primary focus over the coming weeks. In addition to that, we can start to, I guess, more intentionally adjust our attention in a more intentional way towards, um, towards our areas of focus throughout the district. So for example, our, um, culture-responsive teaching and our English language learners, our sort of practices, social-emotional learning, um, our professional learning communities, professional learning for the teachers and global outcome implementation. All of those things have been happening in the background, but now that we, I, we're gonna, uh, hopefully, you know, smoothly trans back, transfer back to in-person, we can really recalibrate and refocus on, on, uh, some of our areas of focus that maybe have gotten lost in some of the shuffle around logistics that we've been having to deal with. So I'm excited for that. And then I think the third thing in our next steps is, I'm, I'm telling everyone, is for all of us to continue to be prepared for changes as they come along, because we know that they will come and we're, I think, uh, more ready than ever right now to, to, to take them on. And that's the good news. And so, um, so we are ready to roll with whatever comes our way over the next few weeks and months. I'm, I'm excited to, um, to see where it takes us. So. Any questions for me or Erin?
Yeah, John, uh, I haven't asked about the bees. How are our bees doing in our library? How's the call?
The bees are doing great. They have multiplied. We, I, I don't know our exact estimate on account, but they have, Erin told me she thinks that they've more than doubled, Erin Wharton. So if you walk in there right now, you see both sides are really full of bees, completely full. So they've been just thriving, absolutely. Uh, so if you haven't, um, well, when you're, when we're able to welcome you back in the school, come by and, uh, and check them out. But they're doing great. Yeah.
Excellent. And then with the trout in the classroom, did any of them survive? Did any of our little baby trout survive?
They did. They survived and all summer long. And they're, they're, uh, fairly large now. And so now our question is, what are we, what are we doing with the larger ones? And so we're going through those motions about what we're going to do with the, the larger ones. We also, um, we're donated a large aquarium from St. Braine, um, this summer, which is awesome. It's about a, um, Sheldon wouldn't remember, remember how many gallons. He picked it up for us. But it's, I don't know, hundreds of gallons. It's, it's a huge, huge aquarium. And, um, we're gonna, the thinking right now is perhaps that could be a place where some of our trout live. But also the main reason we got it is so we can test our aquatic robotic, our aquatic robots, um, in-house. And right now it's being stored downstairs and it's on wheels, but it's a, I don't know, 500-gallon aquarium or something like that. So, um, excited to get that going again. Yeah.
Excellent. And then, uh, one more thing I wanted to say with Denise Ward leaving. I've known her for 30-plus years. I worked with her years and years ago. She's one of the most beautiful people I've ever known. And I'm sad that she's leaving, but I am excited about her retirement. And thank you for acknowledging her and, and giving her a shout-out. She's a wonderful person and she's been fantastic in our district.
Absolutely.
Thank you. That's all for my questions and comments. Anybody else? All right. Well, thank you. Elementary school, moving on to the middle school, Principal Fanning.
All right. Hello, everybody.
At the Zoom floor.
Okay. I'll just start by saying we had a staff meeting after school today and we all started with our, our GO of the day. And I will say about 75% of them said perseverance is really what they've been. That and communication are, I think, our two big ones that we've been using in, in Cloud School. But perseverance was the theme of the day from the staff. So, um, I just want to thank all the middle school staff. They have been just willing to do. I had one say, "Tell me where you want me to be and what you want me to do." And they've come together really well. And we feel like we're ready for in-person learning. And I just appreciate all of them being willing to switch gears so quickly. Um, I'm proud of all the work they did in Cloud School. I want to really acknowledge that we, Cloud School 2.0 was a success at middle school. I felt so positive about the work that we were doing, but we're shifting gears and we are ready for in-person. I think we're working to find a balance. I, I felt like we talk about COVID so much and how to be ready for in-person that we've really at the middle school had to say, "Stop, let's talk about learning for a while" so that we're not just so consumed about COVID. We also need to know, right, where are these kids at? Where do we need to take them this year? So we're finding a balance in, in that. I will let you know, the Boys and Girls Club has been in our building. I was a little nervous about it at first, but it's worked out great. The middle school has hosted the 4th, 5th, and 6th grade. We've also had what I'm calling the Commons cohort. We've had, um, up to 19 kids in our Commons of 6th, 7th, and 8th graders that just either were struggling with Wi-Fi at home or just struggling with Cloud School and needed our environment. So if you've stopped through at all, we've got each one of them at their own lunch table and it's worked out great. I've got teachers that are able to stop by and check on them. They've got solid Wi-Fi. They're getting breakfast and lunch. It also, between the Boys and Girls Club and the Commons kids, it's given us, I, I feel like a really good dry run for what, some things that we need to think about to be ready for in-person. So it's been great to have those kids in the building. And I just wanted to give a shout-out to Boys and Girls Club and really how smoothly it's gone. Certainly, we all had a, I think, just a lot of fears about what could happen, but it's gone great. And our paras, the three paras that we have at the middle school working with those kids have done a fantastic job. So, um, it's also just given us a chance, though, if kids have had symptoms, if parents are calling in and saying a kid has got symptoms, it's given us a daily chance to work through our protocol and doing that with Teresa Oje and making sure we're really clear about how that process will work when we're back in-person. So, um, today we did walkthroughs with the maintenance and custodial staff. We just walked every single room in the building to make sure our desks are set up correctly. We've got a teacher zone. At the middle school, we've actually put tape down on the ground and the teacher will stay in the teacher's zone and the students will stay in the student's zone. And that was a recommendation from the Health Department. We made sure we have spray bottles of sanitizer and, um, paper towels are filled and that everybody's got what they need. And if not, we've got this week to get it figured out. So, um, on a, on a side note, our leadership team, I just wanted you to know, is tackling the Grading for Equity book this year. The high school really dug into it last year. And not only is the leadership team reading it throughout the year, but I have a number of teachers that, um, selected something around grading for equity as their own personal goal this year. And I was just super excited to see that. That wasn't anything mandated by any means, but a number of them did the book study with, with Ruby and Erin and John and whoever else was doing the Grading for Equity book study this summer. So I'm excited to see some changes in our grading practices in the middle school and how that progresses throughout the year and how as a team, we're going to tackle that and coming, coming up with, um, more fair methods of grading and asking ourselves, why are we doing what we're doing? So, wanted to just touch base about that. And then I shared the Return to In-Person Learning Plan with you. Hopefully you've had a chance to read through it. Our phase-in has changed a few times, but I feel solid about where we're at. Next Tuesday, half the 6th grade comes. Next Wednesday, the other half of the 6th grader will come. And then on Thursday, the whole 6th grade will be there and the 7th grade will then join in on Thursday. And then next Friday, which is the 9th, we'll have all of the 6th, all the 7th, and all of the 8th in the building. So, um, kind of a four-day phase-in. We wanted to give the 6th graders two days and have real small groups, um, at school when they come in. So, um, other than that, I could talk for hours about the plan, but we won't do that. So if you have questions about the plan, I'd be glad to answer them. Or I really appreciated Danielle actually stop by school, um, and, and just to see things in action. And we had kids there when she was there. So if anybody else would like to stop by and ask questions about the plan or logistics and what it's going to look like, it's, it's obviously still a work in progress. I still today got asked lots of questions about recess balls and all kinds of things today that I thought I had covered, thought I knew, but we're still working out some things. But if you'd like to stop by the school, I'd sure be glad to talk with you in-person and just show you around and show you what the classrooms look like. But anybody have any questions?
Thanks for all your hard work. One, it does my heart good to hear you doing the GO reflection for the meeting of staff meeting. Also, I, I was hovering in the background when Mr. Bradley was talking about his grading for the year. And, uh, he did a great job explaining to the students, like, is changing grading practice through, from grading through equity. So I don't even know if he's in the book group, but he did a really good job explaining.
Yeah. He, he definitely is. He's on the leadership team. And I've been really proud. I thought, I thought people kind of, grading can be a really personal thing for a teacher, but I've had some teachers just jump in already and say, "Look, the whole year's kind of like that anyway. Let's look at it differently and what could we do?" So I'm glad to hear that, Jason. Thanks for sharing that.
Yeah, and Janet, I wanted to say, uh, you know, I've got an elementary schooler and a middle schooler now. And, uh, they're both doing fantastic with the remote learning. And my 7th grader is so excited to come back to school. She and all of her friends. Even though they, they know it's going to be completely different, uh, they're already talking about how they're going to make everybody follow the rules because they don't want to go remote again.
That's what, that's what we need.
Yeah, I think there's going to be a lot of peer pressure with the middle schoolers. Like, hey, don't screw this up for us. Everybody follow the rules so we can stay together. As we know, anything could change, but so far this year has gone, at least as a parent on my end, really, really smoothly. And, and thank you. And, you know, we, we live in a small house and I hear some of the meetings and, uh, you know, Glenn's a teacher. And I'm very impressed by how well you all have come together as a team and how it even works. It seemed like an impossibility, but you guys have done an amazing job.
Thank you. Thanks, Laura.
Anybody else have any comments for Janet while she's with us? All right. Well, thank you, Janet. Thank you for a fantastic update. Moving on to the high school principals, Bodie and Scott. You guys have the Zoom floor.
Ruby, you want to start?
Sure, Chuck. I'd be happy to. I'll just go over a little bit of where we are with our improvement plan at the high school and what we've been working on since we last talked a month ago. And then Chuck and I'll answer any questions you have about our return to person learning. You might have remembered that last time we, we shared, this is our school improvement plan at the high school. And we have one destination, that's excellence and equity. And we have five goals as a whole staff. And what we've done in the last month under teaching is we've spent our very first two staff meetings really largely on this one goal, that educators leverage blended learning and personalized learning to reach beyond the walls of their classroom. We're all using the same template for our lesson plan designing for all of our classrooms as we do this remote Cloud School on Zoom. And that's a learning template, it's a blended learning template is what we're, we're calling the template. But teachers are sharing all the different things that they're doing. It's largely connected to brain-based, uh, brain-mind education and also culturally responsive teaching as well. So with the help of our coach, John Anderson, we've been doing a lot of work as a staff on leveraging blended learning right now and personalized learning for our students as we're in the remote environment. And so we've been doing a lot of work as a staff, the staff meetings there. And our second one, that educators will use grading practices. You heard Janet mention that teachers have been at the high school. We've all read this book, Grading for Equity, together. And we've been discussing, beginning last year, we've been discussing grading practices at the high school. And, um, that's good to hear about Jason. He was in the summer book study with me. And we're expanding that to the middle school. And that's so awesome, Janet. Thank you for that. And what we, what we've done recently, in the last couple of weeks, and we've seen a lot of success, is we, we identified a problem that we're struggling with. When we're looking at equity right now in Cloud School, it really is surfacing because so much of the learning is reliant right now in the home environment. And that's the resources at home. So it could be the education level of the people in the household to help them, the availability of the people in the household to help them, the resources they have in their household, the supplies they have, their internet access, how many students are on the internet at the same time. And then all the distractions that might be occurring. Can they find a quiet place? And one of the, the gaps we saw is that when a student's starting to fall behind really quickly, if the parents are English-speaking, we can email, call, and both the teacher and the parent are both super comfortable with communicating. But when it comes to a language barrier where one of us speaks English and one of us speaks Spanish, we just don't have the speed of communication like we need to have. And what ends up happening and what we've identified is that our cultural liaison, Jose Almeida, who works so hard and we are so grateful, you guys have no idea the hours this man has been putting in with our teachers to make phone calls. But largely what happens is he becomes this middleman where he doesn't have all the information about the assignment, where to find the assignment, what to do, how to troubleshoot the iPad. And he, and the teachers ask him to call home. And then the parent might have questions or be trying to support the student, but then Jose can't follow up with answering those. So really, the important person, the most important person that needs to connect with the family is the teacher. So how do we bridge that connection between the teacher and the family? And so what we've done is we have Jose in our building every Tuesday and Thursday from 2:00 to 3:00, where every single teacher in the building- where every single teacher in the building has flex time. They're either doing some individual intervention for students or they're meeting with a PLC. And Jose is there to make phone calls with teachers, not without the teacher. So the teacher is there and parents and students can get their question answered right there in that moment. So we don't have this lag in time. A lot of teachers are utilizing Jose and we've seen that that's been really great. We've all been tracking. It was all of the contacts we're making. So if students have a D or an F, we've made sure that the teacher and the family have connected. So that's one big thing we're doing there. We have a communication team that meets weekly. And at some point, I'd love to introduce you to Micah McCreary. He is our student intern, our student communication intern who's working with us. And he comes to our weekly meetings and we go over all of the communication needs and how to get communications out, how we're going to get them out, when we're going to get them out. And Micah right now has been working on writing some student spotlights that are going to be coming out from the school, which have been great. He's also put together a survey for our students on surveying cloud school and what's going well for them. And so it's been great working with Micah. I'd love to introduce him to you. That's through the work-study program that we have at the high school. He is our employee right now at the high school for our communications teams. It's been great. We've learned a lot from him about social media. Under professional learning, every teacher is filling out their personalized learning plans right now. They're scheduling meetings with Chuck and I this month to, this upcoming month, to go over their growth plans. And then finally, wider community, that we celebrate global outcome excellence with community through partnerships, performance and presentations. Our staff as a whole staff is digging into performance assessments. We're taking a look at our summative assessments, our end of semester tests, our semester exams. And we're taking a look at how we can embed global outcomes and make those performance tasks. And so we got started with that on our September 8th meeting. And we're going to be addressing it again October 19th and all throughout the year because every single student, every single teacher, I'm sorry, our expectation is that every single teacher delivers a performance assessment by May for their semester summative. So that is our goal for our staff. And then like the other buildings, you've seen our return to in-person plan. We are bringing freshmen back on the 6th of October. We are bringing sophomores back on the 8th of October. And Chuck and I would like to just open up to you, what questions do you have about our return to in-person plan?
Bless you.
Chuck, did I miss anything as far as our work the last month toward our improvement plan that you want to add?
No, just a couple of things. With Micah, that is part of the Career Wise program that we put together two, three years ago with the state. And we also have, he's doing an apprenticeship. And we also have another young man, Nate, that is working with the Maintenance Department, doing his apprenticeship through them. And it is exciting to see those two grow and just see what they can bring to the table from their perspective. And it's pretty cool to watch them grow and realize this program, the Career Wise program. So I just want to touch on that. I do have a few things. I'll just run through athletics and CTE real quick. With athletics, our golf season finished up last week, so it is complete cross-country. We did have our home meet this past Friday and Saturday. We had to divide it up into two days because you can only run 50 boys and 50 girls each day. And so we had enough teams that we had to run two days down at the nine-hor, the whole course, but it went really well. And then once cross-country, they have their regional meet on October. And hopefully we'll have some student athletes headed to state after that. But if not, then our fall season is complete with athletics. We chose not to play football in the fall. We are going to go spring. And so our athletic season won't start as far as competition goes until after January 7th, I believe, are the first basketball contests and wrestling and girl swimming. Then, but between now and then, our kids can still practice and stay in shape and those types of things. So you'll see the football players out, volleyball players, basketball players, soccer players are all still getting in shape and doing that. CTE-wise, we have about three days of electrical work and three days of mechanical work. And then the state inspector should come in early next week. And we should, barring the inspection goes well with the state, have our certificate of occupancy. You're welcome to stop by down there. We have our auto lift-up. We have several of our wood machines in. The greenhouse is all functioning with the wet wall and everything. We're still hauling out some of the old dirt that we have to get out before we put some of the plants inside, plants and trees, I should say. We have, I think we have lemon and lime trees already here and the banana trees on its way and avocado. So it's kind of cool. And we just got, we have some kids working in there a little bit already, removing dirt of the old dirt so we can put new dirt in and things. So pretty cool. Welcome to stop by. And Dave or Maran or I can give you a tour of that building anytime. Thank you.
Chuck, you had me at banana tree. We're going to grow bananas in Estes Park.
There are. That's the neat thing about this greenhouse is it's state-of-the-art where you can adjust the temperature, adjust the humidity. And it's kind of cool, the computer that runs it all and stuff. And so, yeah, it's pretty cool.
Yeah, lemons, limes, bananas and avocados. I never thought that could happen in Estes Park. How exciting. You know, when it gets going and it's safe, I think that our board, we would love to have a tour. You know, but once everything's in place and operative and you feel confident with it, I think that we would all love to see it.
That'd be awesome.
Chuck, I've got another question for you. I haven't thought about this for a while. But with the Career Wise program with you and how does that work with COVID? How does, are companies and businesses in town wanting to work with our kids right now? Are they kind of voting?
Yeah, I mean, you know, we have a little problem with that right now because the companies and businesses downtown need our kids too much right now. So we have a few that it's easier to go to work than it is to come to school online and stuff. So, yeah, with, you know, the town's struggling a little bit with employees, with J1's not being able to come over this year. And so I know of at least two restaurants who are not operating at full capacity hours-wise because they don't have enough employees. And it's not just in the restaurants, but in the lodging industry also, they're struggling an awful lot. So, yeah, our kids are, you know, being used a lot now and in some cases too much. But it's part of the deal right now. And so we'll work through it.
Is that through the Career Wise program with Maran or is that just seasonal employment?
No, that's just seasonal for the most part. But it is a lot of it. We have a lot of kids that not, or, you know, the Career Wise is the apprenticeship part of it. So we have, I think, three, four kids working in that this year, two of which are at the high school. But then we have, oh, I'm guessing 25 to 30 kids that are working work-study program where they get credit for working and with the employers downtown. So, yeah, we have a lot of kids doing that also.
Okay. Well, thank you, Chuck.
Yes, thank you.
All right. Any other questions from the board to Ruby or Chuck?
This is sort of for, I guess, all the building administrators, not just Ruby and Chuck. But I'm wondering what kinds of questions and concerns you've been getting from families as we all get ready to go back. And, you know, everybody's excited, but I think everybody's also nervous.
I could go first, Danielle. At the middle school, the calls that have come so far are about electives. Because at middle school, we are doing electives remotely. Because we have so many kids enrolled in our elective classes, there was no way to offer those safely in person. So most of the calls I've been fielding since the plan went out are around, my bus doesn't get home till 2:35 and there's an elective at 2:30. And so we're working those out on an individual basis, but I haven't had calls about any specifics like within the plan. We've had a couple that have been speaking to Mary Baron and Lazlo about possibly switching to Remote Learning Academy. But at this point, I've just had two of those. So I think the middle schoolers and their parents just want to be back at school.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just, I was just going to start with what Janet ended with. And that's been the feedback we've been getting is that kids and parents just want to be back in school and they're excited for it. So definitely getting a lot of that feedback. There's also been the conversations around anyone who has maybe some concerns because their child might have some pre-existing health conditions, then the conversations around RLA and whether or not that would be a better fit for them. So, and that's really, you know, we're talking a very small number of students there. And Mary Baron's been great there, helping us facilitate those conversations. And then I think we've also had some going the other way, where we've had some students and families that want to, now that we're going back to in-person, feel like shifting from RLA to cloud school it might be the better thing for them as well. And so we're working through that with the families. You know, it's not, it's not the, you know, a perfect transition because RLA is a different curriculum and different scope and sequence and everything else. But we're working through that individually with all the families.
Yeah, same thing. In K2, we've had about two or three students, you know, reach out kind of knowing that they're not ready to be in person and seeking out other options. And then we've had probably more than double that that have decided to come once, that they're going to transition back when we come in person from either RLA or homeschool. And I think, you know, I've heard only from two parents about the two o'clock dismissal from school and about kind of after-school program offerings and things like that. So, and we have started kind of having conversations about creating some after-school options for families.
All right. Well, thank you, everybody. Any other?
Yeah, Laura, I have one more. So kind of to piggyback off of that, what about your staff? Are they coming to you with lots of questions and concerns or are they feeling pretty good? Where do they kind of?
We dedicated some time in the last staff meeting to do some question answers with our staff at the high school because, you know, we let them know about our plan to go back to in-person, beginning to phase in on September 28th. And what we heard from our staff was, well, hold on, that's a little too early. We need a little more time to process this. We were planning for the end of the quarter, which would have been October 16th. And now I gotta, I gotta have more time to prepare for wrapping my mind around this. And so that's why you saw the change in our plan from a very early draft to a next draft to maybe a next draft. I'm not sure how many drafts we had, but we got feedback from our staff and we changed our plans several times based on their feedback, which is why we decided we're going to prioritize freshmen and sophomores, so the students struggling most and where we're seeing the most inequities. And so we're going to bring them back to end the quarter and then we'll bring the juniors and seniors back when our quarter switches over and our new classes begin. So we'll only be bringing two classes of students back until second quarter starts and then we'll bring everybody.
And I would piggyback on what Ruby said. We were to start our phase in this Thursday. And based on staff feedback also, we switched it to next Tuesday. It just made sense with Monday being a PD day. Like, I don't know what I, well, I know what I was thinking, but it just makes more sense to give us this Thursday and Friday. And then Monday, our staff is just going to have time to make sure they've got everything in place for in-person. So that gives us that whole day, the fifth. So we moved that date. I will say, most of the questions from staff have been super helpful. Like, Janet, are we going to run the bells? Like, why would we run the bells if the only people moving are teachers? I don't know. I hadn't thought about that. Like, should we give them a bathroom pass to carry anymore? Because then lots of hands are going to be on the bathroom pass. Like, those are the kind of great questions I'm getting from staff that are just helping us get dialed in, I think, really well for in-person.
One of the other pieces of feedback we're getting from our staff is they're fearful about what will happen if there's several students in class that stay home and they decide, I'm just going to stay home and keep learning online. And that's a really, really good concern because the students that are in cloud school currently are the families that signed up for in-person learning. And well, now we're going back to in-person learning. And so as a teacher, to, right now, they are able to put all of their attention and focus right here in the computer on Zoom with all of their students. And now they will have a classroom of students. So they can't focus intently and put all of their focus and energy into the computer and also put all of that energy into the classroom as well. And so that was a concern. So we know that there will be students that might need to quarantine because they are in contact with someone that had a positive case or something like that. There's going to be small cases like that here and there where you might have a student out for two weeks or something. And those things will come up and we'll handle those when they come and we'll work with the teacher. The teacher and student will work together to make sure they don't miss anything. But, you know, we are planning for our students to be here in person unless there's something going on. And that's probably the only concern at the high school we've had from parents is can we, you know, we thought we were ready, maybe we're not ready. And so we are allowing, I know before, we had said that if you're going to be in RLA, you have to commit till the semester. We're allowing those families to make that decision of, we thought we were ready for in-person, but now we're not. That's okay. We still can get you into RLA. We're going to work with that and make sure you can get into RLA if that's what your family decides. So that's probably the only other parent concern at the high school. And teachers are concerned about that too. So Chuck, can you think of any other themes that arose?
No, I just, I think the kids are excited to get back and we have a lot of kids that we need back in the building to get them where we need to go. And so, you know, yes, there's some concerns, but I'm looking forward to next week and seeing kids. And I think the majority of our teachers are too. And the kids are ready.
Yeah, so as Janet mentioned, I did get a chance to go walk through a couple of the buildings last week and that was really great. I feel like at this point, you know, the district has done pretty much everything we reasonably can do to make this a safe transition. I completely understand families that are not ready to go back in person. I completely understand kids that are climbing up the walls to get back to school and their friends. And it's a really tricky situation. Like I said, I was really happy with what I saw in the buildings. And I think now it's up to all of the adults, the teachers, the staff, the parents, the other members of the community to remember that we are still in safer at home. We need to still be following all of the protocols. It's not time to go out and have a party with your friends or go out to a crowded restaurant to celebrate being back, you know, to sort of normal. We, as adults, need to keep doing the work to keep these kids and our staff in the building safe. And I really am hopeful that that's what we're going to see as we make this transition. So thank you to all of you for your hard work. And we're almost there. Hopefully, like I said, we can all, you know, continue to sacrifice just a little bit more so that this is a success.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments for our principals? All right. Thank you, everybody. Moving on to our Director of Special Education, Mr. Lazlo Hunt.
Good evening, everyone. What I have to share has already kind of been shared because I'm working, of course, within all the buildings for students of special needs. We have actually had quite a few students back in person with us for the past few weeks. We've been working with a limited, small group, typically one-on-one with some of our more significant need students who weren't Were unable to access a whole lot of the cloud school types of things because of their their needs, so we've. Been working through that and we've had a lot of success with that. It's been. There's, you know, learning every day with it, but it's been, it's been very positive and so we'll be continuing that through the transition. And of course, expanding that to. To more students as we get in person. I also, I wanna talk, I wanna give a shout out to to the learning place. We we have a handful of students that are medically fragile. And parents are very, and they and and significant needs and so parents are very, very nervous about. Their students being building, but it's also. Wanting to have them be out of the home for brief periods of time to get some educational services, so. Sue has been working with us to possibly serve some students in her location, which will be a lot more. During the day will be a lot quieter and not as many folks in and out, so. She's been a great partner and we're working, she's been helping us with some of our of our situations that we're working through with families. And then the last piece I want to share is just that we are. We are working through our IEP plans this year and we're writing contingency plans for all of our students that are on on IEPs. Of what services look like and I think what John said earlier is. Preparing that we're gonna be going through more changes. It's we're not through this and that. There may be periods of time when we can't be in school again and we're. Wanting to make sure we have the best planning we can for students with disabilities. For all of our students, but in specifically in their plans for what that looks like, so we're gonna be working through that. I'm gonna switch gears and talk a little bit about RLA. You guys have heard a little bit about that tonight. We are, we've changed and gotten a little more flexible. We're. Definitely hearing the the call, not a lot of families, but there are some that are wanting to come in there, come into the RLA program now. And also the other way, we've had some families that have decided that they want to be back in person, so we're working with the school. To be able to facilitate that. I do want to just give a shout out to that staff. We. We pulled somebody out of retirement. It's almost like a yin yang, you know, we Denise goes into retirement and we pulled Lisa Waller out of retirement. To teach for us, so she's helping us out with our K two and I think you are all aware, but Brooke. Fortini and Terry Beaver and then Cindy Bash at the high school has increased her. Teaching load side of her job to help us out and then Mary Baron has been a great addition to help us with just facilitating and. Working kind of connecting the schools with RLA. And also Joe Fry and Andrew Verden have asked to help out and so they're still teaching full time, but. On the side, they're doing some grading for us because there's a lot of grading, as you can imagine, and a lot of reading of students' work. So they're kind of, they've kind of chipped in a little bit to help and. What I'll say about the team is it's been like, it's it's just, it's been really. Really cool because they've been learning as we go. We have these weekly meetings and they're teaching each other. We're like, it's built truly building the plane while we fly it, but. They're just, one would learn it and they're so excited to teach the rest of them. Oh, I figured out how to do this and this. So while it's been definitely a a challenge to do to kind of build that as we're going, the teach those that staff that I just mentioned has been great. At putting it together and 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 really getting good response from our families that are in. The RLA are feeling good about things and I think we're in a good spot to continue to grow that this year as we need to. And then, yeah, the last piece I just want to talk about is options. We've, we do have. We've had options, kind of an online version for a really small group of kids that wanted to do that. And then we we are looking at a bringing options back in person. And the YMCA has donated several of their spaces that they've been using for cloud school. To allow us to run options in a much bigger space than we were before and allow more students and better, better. Just better conditions for social distancing and getting outside and all the things we know are gonna be helpful when we when we bring kids in in person. So thank you to the YMCA for doing that partnership, providing us that free of charge. For the year for our kids to be able to have that access, so. That's all I've got as far as updates. If you have any other, if you have any questions, um. Available.
Great. First, a huge thank you. It's a Herculean task to do IEPs. That during COVID, so shout out to everyone. I I would like to hear more about how is RLA going for the students? How are they doing with it?
Well, there was definitely a. There was the first couple of weeks, there was a lot of, a lot of stress because they started to see the amount of work. But what we, what what we've been there and this is just the conversations we've had with teachers and. I think as the teachers kind of got their stride and were able to provide. Feedback to the students pretty quickly. There was a little bit of a gap there, them learning the system and then providing feedback. And also letting students know, reminding students that we, while we're trying to. Follow as closely as we can the district kind of schedule. That they have, we have flexibility and if it takes, I just had a meeting with a parent yesterday. Where we were like, if it takes your student an extra week and they need to work into January, we can, we can accommodate all those things. We want to keep kids on schedule best we can, but. We, there's flexibility for families to be able to do things and I think what's the, once we've heard, once students understood. And got into their into their workflow, we're seeing a lot more success. There are still some students struggling in there that we're working through. But I would say overall, I mean, we have a nice kind of a pie chart that tells you how many, you know, how many successful, they call them successful enrollments. And that just everyday updates with this, with the teachers and. It's looking pretty good right now. We have about eighty, eighty, eighty-five percent of our students green, doing fine, and then there's a little bit of yellow. And then a little bit of red, as you would expect, so so. We're working, teachers are working to connect with those students. There's a. A thing called the discussion-based assessment, which we. Really kind of recently learned about and are really, we're getting some more training on it, actually. Right now, we're working on getting that training set up, but that's where teachers do like a one-on-one consult with the students and they actually talk about what they're learning. And that the teachers have found to be the most useful piece of the whole thing because. Yes, they can grade and they can look at their work and they can watch their progress, but then when they sit down and have those short. Opportunities to connect with the students and listen to the students discuss the the content, though the teachers have really felt like. That's kind of helped solidify a lot of what they're doing, so. Overall, we're hearing pretty positive pieces. We're still still some students that are having tech issues. We became, we became tech support. For a bunch of Estes Park folks. How do I open this file and how do I set up my printer and you know, but it's, we got through all that and I think people are feeling a little bit more. Successful and we're able to get through. We're seeing a lot of success in getting students and getting into courses and staying up to speed on them.
Great, thanks. Thanks for problem solving on that. I'm curious, for each staff member, how many RLA students are they working with?
So right now. There, there are about twenty, at the elementary, we're right around twenty to twenty-five, somewhere in that neighborhood. Middle school, a little bit higher than that. Middle school and high school, they, they were kind of doing a lot of sharing. Cindy and Terry, while they have the case manager, management of those students. Are helping each other with grading based on their expertise area. Terry being more language arts based, Cindy being more math science, so. We are evaluating whether whether we are amply staffed as we get into this now. And that's where Joe Fry and Andrew came in because they're, they're doing some extra contract time, but kind of take the the biggest load is the grading. It's like the hardest part is to keep up with it because there's just a lot of, they're submitting assignments, a lot of that. And so as we get better at figuring out what that load is and we're still considering whether we need. Any additional help, I'm going to be meeting with the teachers, we're meeting tomorrow to talk a little bit about that. On average, twenty-five to thirty at the top end.
Thank you.
Laz, I wanted to say that I had a big Casby meeting where I got to connect with a lot of other board members around Colorado. And a big part of our discussion was the significant challenges in special ed right now. So I definitely thought about you and staffing and that personalized education and attention that each of these children need. It is a real challenge. We're challenged with everything right now with all of our students, but especially. With that population.
Yeah, that's a good.
But but thank you for working. And I just know that, yeah, just across Colorado, especially with finding enough staff to help take care of these students. And you had just mentioned that, but thank you for all that hard work and and know. You know, well, as you know, everybody in Colorado is really struggling with this right now.
Yeah, that's a good point. My, my joke with the staff and we start getting, when it starts getting to be a struggle is. We're putting the I back in IEP. We're really truly individualizing. Because it's like the schedules are all over the place and the needs are all over and, you know, we're working closely with families, so it's been, it's definitely been a challenge, but. I also feel like we're learning a lot from it, so. Been been interesting.
Do you think that things will get easier once we're in person with some of these kids and families?
Yeah.
Okay.
I do, and our next big challenge is to figure out how we. How general, how we balance that general education. The safety of the cohorting within the general education plans that you guys are all looking at. And the need for students to possibly be pulled out. And get some supports outside of the classroom and how we facilitate that to keep everyone safe. And as well as, we're looking at a lot, we're still doing a lot of, like, we have a lot of students that are still zooming in to the classes even though they're in building. Because it minimizes the, you know, going to different cohorts and such, so. That's the part that's kind of, kind of exciting is how we can see the combination of in-person and virtual happening to be able to get students access.
Well, thank you, Laz. Any other board members have any questions or comments for Lazlo?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Laz. All right, moving on to Agenda Item two point two, our Superintendent's Report, Sheldon.
I used to go, like to go first because I could steal all their thunder, so I don't have a lot to say. That first, I mean, just amazing part is you can see all what they've done and and the staff has done and teachers and. And paras and secretaries and administrative support in all areas. Has done an amazing job of orchestrating all these moving pieces and and I just can't. Say how much I appreciate all that. I think a second thing, the theme that you saw in there is that no one is. Only talking about the logistics. They're really talking about education and actually still improving education, staying with our goals. No matter what kind of education we're in and improving. Just like we would if COVID didn't exist, maybe not exactly the same way, but still looking for ways. To meet our goals and some things are actually helping and some things of, of course, are huge challenges that we have to overcome, but. I do appreciate that intense detail to by the teachers and all the staff. And like I say, administrative support. Everybody's job is doubled and they're doing the logistics part of it and the support part of it as well as continuing. Worrying about education and and you know, as we look through the teachers. Results of the, of the survey we sent out, someone asked that question earlier. Obviously, there is things that, you know, there's questions about and concerns about and cohorting and numbers and. Safety issues and stuff, but you know, most of them, you know, are things that we just can need to continue to address and improve on. And we feel very comfortable in our plan. We feel that it is very safe. Lot of the, not a lot, but some of the. Requirements have actually probably reduced a little bit, talking to other schools, but we're gonna stay with the most. More intense of regular cleaning and and keeping stuff at a higher level just to be safer. You know, it's really about keeping our kids safe is really about wearing masks and washing your hands. That's really ninety percent of it, even more than distancing. We know kids are not going to distance all the time, but they're wearing their mask correctly. And and doing the, washing their hands mostly. We are lucky that this particular virus doesn't stay on hard materials very long, so. Or even though we're still going to keep a cleaning regimen all day long, so I appreciate moving towards that. The second part of that is, you know, being able to stay in school and and I know that we have had a little uptake recently. In our numbers in Laramo County. Estes Park has been still fortunate. In thirty-eight days, we've had three cases. And so we went twenty-six days with no cases in Estes Park. That's why we made the move to go back to in-person learning, but we've had a couple since, but there has been an uptake. I think there's, you know, that's stayed nationwide. We're seeing. Labor Day. Cases right now and of course, in Laramo County. It really hasn't changed a lot, except we've had a significant number in the fire and a significant number, of course, to colleges coming back to school. That's where most of the cases have gone and there's some. Some healthcare facilities. Long-term healthcare facilities are having issues as well. We've only still only had one outbreak in in Estes Park and that was in July and it was only three people. And so if we, which shows with all the tourists we have here, if we do the right things, if we. Wear masks and wash our hands and keep distancing, we can limit. The the exposure and hopefully stay in school for a long time, but it's important for however long we're here that we get those personal connections. We get. Understand each other a little better, the teachers and the students, that personal connection, so if we do have to go back, we have that in place already and can better communicate. On a personal level, although I, you know, I I'm very confident that our safety plans. Are are very strong and and will work. But we cannot control community spread and if community spread comes in, we'll have to adjust to that and we'll monitor that very closely. So that is probably the challenge that we're gonna face. Again, I appreciate. Everyone on staff, if you really look at it, I've. You know, it is not adult-driven, it is student-driven. And even though we have challenges all over the place, the students come first, whether it's providing extra help in remote learning. Or bringing in small groups or special need students or going back. To in-person learning, it's about the students and providing a safe and best learning environment for them, so. Very proud to say that we're a student-driven school and adult issues. Come secondary, they're very important and need to have safety, but they come secondary to doing what's best for the student. Which includes all modes of. Learning, including remote learning and supporting homeschool students and everything else that we do. So you know, that's my, my big spill, things that we are working on for the future. We're trying to. Rebuild some of some of our social emotional work that we're doing and we're working through that piece. I'm also in the process of. Writing a grant. You may have noticed that the governor has, I think it's thirty-eight million dollars. To promote innovation. He don't want COVID, just like we're talking about, he doesn't want COVID, everybody just try to get along. He wants to keep the innovation and stimulate the innovation going. Like we're trying to do, so I'm working on a plan to write a grant. And they can be very significant grants for two years. I think the smallest grant is two hundred fifty thousand, two hundred fifty thousand to four million. I don't think I'll get to four million, but. But you can also work with other schools and work with cooperatives and and different groups on those grants, so. Again, it's kind of complicated to do those grants, so they actually put in for our schools. A grant to write the grant and so I'm gonna be working with, putting a grant to the Gates Foundation. To support us in coming up with a good proposal for the RISE grant and so we'll have the. Gates Foundation working with us to help us write and discover our needs. And just design a program for, to put in for the grant to keep the innovation that we're already doing. We don't have to come up with something new. We can use it to support our global outcomes, our equity. Goals. Or we can add something new to that or expand on those or social emotional learning stuff. So that is something I've been trying to work on in my spare time and hopefully I'll get that in this week. And then we'll spend some time with the Gates Foundation, which I've worked before as a gate school in in Washington and they do some really good work on planning and organization. And we are working on. Working with the Boys and Girls Club to provide after-school programming. From two o'clock to either five or six. We're working for grants for that and you know, one of the big problems with that is staffing, so we're seeing what we can do to support with our staff. And boys and girls are looking at what they can do with their staff to make that happen, to give again, more support to our stu, our parents. That are working and and so those kids have an opportunity to learn. After the school day is done, if they don't have the support at home. Other big things, that's probably the biggest things right now, so again, it's about. Doing all the work on the ground to keep going. Oh, I gotta mention that Power Schools have came a long ways. Congratulations Heather and Anne and Nick and Debbie, all the people working on that. They put in thousands of hours on that and it's just been. A good nightmare because we're getting some really nice results at the end. But it was pretty rocky in the middle and a lot of loss of sleep, like most nightmares. In the middle of it, so I'm excited. in the middle of it. So I'm excited to start rolling that out, and it's real friendly and has a lot of capabilities. There's still going to be some hiccups, and it isn't where we wanted it to be. But we are very happy to be moving forward that. And I just want to give a huge shout out again of the dedication and full commitment and perseverance on that as well. So, that's it. You have any questions for me?
Sheldon, I just want to say I'm so proud of all of the hard work that you've put in and all the thousands of hours you've put in as well. And our, your staff is amazing. I'm incredibly impressed, and it's been a very rocky year. It's going to continue probably to even get rockier. But I have so much faith in, in you and our staff, and I like what I see. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions or comments for Sheldon?
I do have a couple of things on the legislative side, if you want me to bring those up.
Sure.
It's a reminder. We do have two amendments. And if you've seen, I think most of you probably got your blue book out back with your, from the county stating the election information. If you haven't, you're probably beginning this soon. Referendum B is on repeal of the Gallagher Amendment. There's pluses and minuses to it. The pluses is that it would balance residential and would not reduce the residential tax under the Gallagher law that would put more money into general fund, which education would help with that. Of course, opponents of that, which I also have to address as well, saying, you know, they don't have a replacement for that. But I encourage everyone to read that amendment. And I encourage people to do what they think is right on that. But it is one that can affect the school. Yeah, if it is, if it is passed and is repealed, it would allow more money to the general fund, which we would assume we'd get to this, to the, to the schools. But again, I understand both sides. I want everybody to make sure they, they read that carefully and do the vote that they feel is necessary. The second one is, I think it's EE. And that is cigarette, tobacco, and nicotine products tax. It increases some taxes on cigarettes and chew, smokeless tobacco. But big thing that it does is allows us to tax vaping, which is already taxed right now. And so with that money, the first two years, that money is directly linked to rural schools, which we qualify. So that would really help us get through some type times. So it would benefit us. And then it, after two years, it goes more into the full preschool programs. And money would be dedicated to preschool programs. So there's a few other things that's dedicated for, but it's money that is direct tax that would directly go into rural education to start with, and then preschool, as well as some other things as well. Again, you know, the side of that is it's more taxes, and I have to present that as well. But, and I understand that. But I encourage people to read through those EE and B and make their choice on this. And that's it.
All right. Any questions or comments for Sheldon?
Just comment for me. I have Tracy Rainey coming in on October 13th. Work session, board had asked for a education session on the bills coming up. And so she'll be doing a short presentation and taking questions.
Hey, Tracy Rainey works for us at Colorado Finance. She's really probably the leading person in the state, no doubt about it, for all schools on, on finance and bills on finance and, you know, and projections. She can give us a great idea of the projections that they're coming up with. So I appreciate that, Eric. She is really a solid presenter.
Yeah, thank you, Eric, for organizing that. I'm excited to hear what she has to say. Yeah, thank you, Eric.
Any other questions or comments for Sheldon? All right. Thank you, Sheldon. Moving on to Agenda Item 2.3, Board Reports. I'll start with CBOs, because I have nothing to report. The, they didn't have a quorum, so the meeting was canceled. So, nothing to report from CBOs. Anybody else?
I'm on the Workman's Comp Board. And just letting you guys know, there hasn't been a meeting, but they, there's a St. Braine claim they want to settle, so they needed our approval. So I said it was okay for them to try and settle it. They're not sure they will, but they want to know. Okay. So I just, out of transparency, I want you to know that that's happening. That's it.
Thank you, Jason. Anybody else? All right, moving on to Agenda Item 2.4, our Student Board Representative Report. Ms. Honda.
I just want to start off by saying thank you. I know that there's a lot of work being done that we don't directly see as students. And we do appreciate all the extra work you guys are putting into making in-person learning and remote learning a sustainable possibility for all of us as students. So, thank you. And I'm really excited to come back to school and see if we can start doing in-person learning safely and really being able to build those connections in person instead of over technology. So, and I'm happy to answer any questions if anyone has any.
Now, Mina, is this your senior year or your junior year?
Senior year.
Senior year. Excellent. Well, hopefully, hopefully it can be as normal as possible. I don't know if it will, though. And, Mina, I have a question from, like, your bubble of friends. Are most of them coming back in person or have a lot of them chosen the remote academy?
I actually have a lot of friends in the Remote Learning Academy, but I'm seeing that they will either see the semester through and then come back to in-person learning, or will be transitioning to in-person learning with the rest of us. Other than that, I think we're all really anxious to get back to in-person learning.
Yeah. And as one of our students, do you have any concerns? Do you have any fears? Are you just excited to kind of get back to normal?
I'm, I feel somewhat nervous that not all of the precautions will be followed by the high school students. We have a lot of our own free will, and sometimes it's used to break rules. But I think that a lot of the precautions that you guys are putting in place will do their job and we'll have to see how it goes, but I have high hopes.
Excellent. And I'm excited for our next regular meeting next month to hear how it went for you. Thank you, Mina. Anybody else have any questions or comments for Mina?
Do you, is there anything we're missing or you think we should be doing to make students feel better about coming back to in-person?
I think that a lot of the communication is coming to the parents, which is great at elementary and middle school level. But at the high school level, I think a lot of us want to see direct communication with the students instead of through our parents, because we are older and more responsible for our own well-being. But other than that, I think everything that the administration is doing is really great. So.
Well said. So I'm curious, like, there's email blasts out. I know to all the families on what, like, the high school is doing their plan. Did that go to students?
No.
Thanks.
Interesting to hear, Mina, because we sent it to our student population from Blackboard, too. So you should have received all of our newsletters from the principals, our return to learning plan. And we're sending one tomorrow at 5 o'clock that you should get to. So that's interesting. We are going to have to investigate our mass messaging and find out why that's happening.
I'm glad to hear that there is an effort being made, but sometimes technology doesn't want to work with us. So.
All right. Any other questions or comments for Mina? All right. Thank you, Mina. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 2.5, our Safety Update. Sheldon, I'm not sure who's going to give that. Is that you or Brian?
Oh, it's me. I mean, the safety, I think, was, you know, at that time, we put that on the agenda. We were talking about, you know, coming back to school, whatever, which now we have huge plans on. But I want to touch a few things that maybe we haven't touched on. Our transportation, we've been sending out over and over again, trying to really nail down who needs to ride buses. We really encourage people not to ride buses, to keep our numbers lower. As of right now, I think this morning, we had 117 people said they would need to ride buses, which is down quite a bit, which is good. And so it'd keep our numbers lower. We're trying to keep our buses, even though we have more capacity than this. Again, we're trying to keep it around 30. So we can make sure that we can do that safely and under all the protocols of everybody wearing masks and, and cleaning and all those sort of things. And we'll just have to see when we get the numbers. We may have to redo routes or run, you know, maybe a second in-town route or expand. We can expand who we expect to walk. Right now, we pick up people very, very close to the school, and maybe we'll just say, yeah, we're going to go out and do our circle a little bigger so people could walk. Then we made some cross, crossing guards or something like that. So, again, it's something which is nice. We're phasing in. We'll know how those are working out. We're running our buses, even though we're only doing kindergarten first, so we can start getting the feel of that and try to work on the adjustments to that. We're going through the cleaning procedures in the schools and meeting with principals, like Janet did with her staff, and walking through and moving desks and doing the things that we need to do and, and making sure that's safe as well as our food services of delivering to rooms or setting up systems where kids can come get bags for both breakfast and lunch. That is safe manner. So there's a lot of logistics and all those, people coming in different doors. This many safety requirements. And the other part of it is we're trying to drill down of when you have symptoms, what do you do? Both the staff member and a, and a student. If that parent gets that, we're having a, we're hoping that parents, we're having them sign affidavit that they will check with their kids and check for symptoms and hopefully do their temperature in the mornings. And before they come to school, and if they have any questions, give us a call. We've set up forums so we can track that. We will have our tenant secretaries ask script of what, what symptoms they have and give them the protocols that we have in place right now. And, you know, if the symptoms don't stop in 24 hours, then you need to probably see a doctor, probably go get tested, those sort of things as, as is written by the state and county. Unfortunately, or fortunately, I'm not sure which, on October 1st or around there, we're supposed to get new guidelines on all that. So I'm sending out guidelines that may be obsolete, but I really don't have a choice. They promised them by Labor Day, and so it's October 1st. I think that's after Labor Day. So we'll see how that goes. But just so you know, those things will be changing, but we are on top of it. We have some ways to, to work on that. We're building our teams up and training our teams to be able to do that. We still have some more hiring to do. But those are, those are the crucial parts. If we can, I know, people are monitoring their symptoms and taking care of theirselves and following the guidelines, it's a, it's a big plus to us. And people have done it pretty well. I mean, we've caught a lot of people and had them stay home and, and that, the symptoms and what you do with symptoms probably isn't going to change a lot. It's how many people you quarantine, what a close contact is what they're trying to define. And so that's probably what's going to be changing in the future and how many people that would, would quarantine or isolate, put in isolation and, and the rules on that. So it's really complicated and it's changing. But we're putting the tools in place so that hopefully we can, can do that in a safe, safe manner and an efficient manner. And don't get too many calls. Apparently, that's some of the issue. I have been on a couple of roundtables with superintendents and superintendents that have been open for a long time. They think it, it has worked well for them, even though they have had to quarantine, they've had to shut down schools. They've stopped outbreaks. Kids have came and, and been in parties that you may have read, and then came to school, but the school stopped it and got people sent home, so it didn't expand. If they weren't going to school, they may not have had that opportunity to stop that spread. So there's some good things with that as far as community spread is concerned, but it's very taxing and time-consuming. As far as the students following the rules, that was their biggest one concern, like we have, but their experience has been, even in some very difficult communities, the students want to go to school and they're willing to follow the rules. And that's been the least of their problems. Overwhelming. Everybody says that in people that we're really worried about. So I hope we have the same experience as we come back, that the kids understand they are more adaptable than us as adults, and they'll do the right thing. And I trust that'll happen in most cases. So that's sort of it. If you have any questions or concerns, I'll take those.
Sheldon, our, our district sent out a thing, at least on Facebook, that I did as a parent, to order a smart thermometer for free. Have other, do you know, have a lot of our families taken advantage of that? It's supposed to be delivered to the elementary school and then brought home. We haven't received it yet, but it's a really nice thermometer, a smart thermometer, that, because I know that they're hard to get a hold of right now. Do you know if a lot of our other families have taken advantage of that program?
I, I don't know the numbers at all. And that was, I think, only an elementary program. But, yeah, but, yeah, I don't know that, who took advantage of that. I know we sent out the information, and I haven't talked to person to see what, what we had as, as response to that. But hopefully good, and hopefully we, we get them and get them out to them. But, yeah, if people do have problems with getting thermometers, we will do there, or we could set up to, we are set up to do temperatures here. We will take temperatures. Anyone looks a little droppy or says they don't feel well, we'll immediately take immediate temperature and then probably a secondary temperature. So we do have thermometers here for most of our staff, if not all of our staff. So we probably won't be having them do it, but we will, we have the capabilities to do that.
Okay. Well, once we receive our free thermometer, I'll report back.
I have a question for you, Sheldon. The superintendents that you spoke to at the schools that have had to do complete shutdowns for spikes in cases, what was their, like, return plan to go back? Is that something that we've thought about here in Estes, that if we do have this, you know, crazy spike in cases or get to a point where we have to do a school or, or district shutdown, what that would look like?
Well, I mean, there's, there's, you know, there's a lot of different ways there. Most of those schools had not actually shut down. They'd shut down a class or two classes or whatever, Section A or Section B. They hadn't shut down their whole school. They kept going. Every one of those kept going. I know some schools have. I just didn't talk to that superintendent, have shut down their schools for a couple of weeks until they get a hold of it. I know there's a school shut down, a private school shut down in the valley right now. So, but with that being said, as far as what, what we're concerned, when we started building this in the summer, we built in that contingency, and that's why we were able to go to remote learning so quickly, is because we built the system to go in and out. And so we have our remote learning again. So we would have those kids, and they'd go back to remote learning for however long they needed to. The awkward one is kind of when you're in between, when maybe half your class is quarantined and the other half isn't. That's the one we're struggling with. But if we are totally shut down, I think that we would be in pretty good shape. There'd be a transition there, and we wouldn't like it, but we could do that. Possibility, you know, if some of the kids are out, some of the, and we're still trying to sort that out. Now, some schools are doing that every single day. That's their in-person learning. It's having some kids in and some kids out every other day, because they're so large as school districts. And so we're, we're lucky and that we're trying to do real in-person learning for the most part for five days a week. But, you know, we'll, we'll have to work on that piece with half of me and half of not. I really feel comfortable that we could switch back to remote learning if we needed to for two, three, four weeks or whatever we needed to and do a great job as we have so far. But we'd have, maybe even do a little better job because we had this personal experience getting to know each other. getting to know each other a little bit better, which would help us keep those connections once we went back to remote. So I am pretty confident in that and I, principals could talk to that as well. But that's, that was definitely something we thought of as we built our plans from the very beginning.
Thanks, Sheldon.
Any other questions or comments about the safety update from Sheldon? All right, moving on to Agenda Item 3, the Consent Agenda. Would a board member like to make a motion to approve the items listed on the Consent Agenda?
So moved.
I'll second.
I'll take any questions or comments on the Consent Agenda items from the board now. All right, we'll take a vote. Heather, roll call please.
Mr. Adams?
Aye.
Mrs. Capo?
Aye.
Mrs. Case?
Aye.
Mr. Kushner?
Aye.
Mrs. Wall?
Aye.
All right, the ayes have the vote, the motion is passed. Moving on to Agenda Item 4, Action Items. We don't have any. So moving on to Agenda Item 5, Upcoming Meetings and Designations. Our next work session is Tuesday, October 13th. It will be in-person at the admin building at 8:30. And Heather, for this one, we're meeting in-person and then zooming any public participation, correct?
Yep.
Correct?
Yeah.
Thank you. And then our next regular meeting is Monday, October 26th. In-person, if possible, because we may not have the town hall at that time. Is that right, Heather?
Yeah, from what I understand, they are still not renting, so it will be in-person. I'm just gonna get back to you on location. And then we will do Zoom for those who want to join or publicly participate. So the board will be in-person.
Okay, can we just do it at the admin building as well?
I think so, I think we can space well enough there.
Okay. Okay, so the same for the work session and the regular meeting next month. Yep. And that is at 6:15, most likely at the admin building.
Yes.
All right, any questions about the upcoming meetings and designations? All right, moving on to Agenda Item 6, Other. Anybody have any other business they would like to talk about? All right, moving on to Agenda Item 7, Adjournment. Would a board member like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting?
So moved.
All right, well, thank you, everybody. Have a great night.